Nicole, the Raton City Commission to order. Can we have roll call, please?
Sure. Mayor Sagata.
Here.
Mayor Protem Schuster.
Present.
Commissioner Chavez.
Here.
Commissioner Drakamo. And Commissioner Chatterley.
Present.
All right, will you all join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Looks like we have a nice group of visitors. Thank you all for coming. Is there anyone who has business aside from what's on the agenda? And if you'll notice on the agenda, it says the offices were closed on April 7th for Good Friday. Public notice, there may be, there's a potential quorum of the city commissioners who may attend the Raton Town Hall meeting on April 20th at 6:00 PM. That's happening at the Raton Convention Center. And I hope a good number of you and out in the listening audience will be able to attend. The next regular commission meeting will be Tuesday, April 25th at 6:00 PM in the, right here in the chambers. And tonight, we have a proclamation for the Telecommunicators Week, which is April 9th through the 15th, 2013. Whereas emergencies can occur at any time that require police, fire, or emergency medical services. And whereas when an emergency occurs, the prompt response of emergency service is critical to the protection of life and preservation of property. And whereas the safety of our police officers and firefighters is dependent upon the quality and accuracy of information obtained from citizens who telephone to the City of Raton Dispatch Center. And whereas public safety telecommunicators are the first and most critical contact of our citizen, our citizens have with emergency services. And whereas public safety telecommunicators are the single vital link to our police officers and firefighters by monitoring their activities by radio, providing them with information, and ensuring their safety. And whereas the City of Raton telecommunicators have contributed substantially to the appreciation of apprehension, sorry, of criminals, suspension of fires, and treatment of patients. And whereas each dispatcher has exhibited compassion, understanding, and professionalism during the performance of their job in the past year, now does, therefore, James Neil Sagata, Mayor of the City of Raton, does proclaim the week of April 9th through April 15th, 2013, as Telecommunicators Week in the City of Raton in honor of our telecommunicators whose diligence and professionalism keep our citizens and city safe. All right. Moving on. Presentation of, we're moving on to, are there items from citizens present? I know I already asked, but anybody? Are you on the agenda?
No.
Then yes, come up now and introduce yourself in the microphone, please.
Good evening. I'm Amber Cita-Cintas. And I'd like to address the commissioners as a parent of a high school senior. My son goes to school in Maxwell, New Mexico, and will be graduating this year. As you know, each year, parents of the Raton High School purchase a senior banner for their child to be placed along Main Street to celebrate their educational achievements. This year, I asked the person in charge of ordering the banners if I could purchase one for my son to be put up as well. I was told by the person ordering them that I could, but then the school was getting complaints saying if a senior doesn't go to Raton High School, they shouldn't be included. As a taxpayer and community member, I feel that he should be allowed to have a banner regardless of what school he attends. Neither the city nor the school is paying for the banners. Parents are purchasing them, and the city is volunteering to put them up. I don't want to cause issues for the city or take away from anyone having a banner placed in town. I simply want my child to be included. I paid for his banner and even offered to purchase a bracket so as not to take away, anything away from anyone else. And I was assured that there were plenty of brackets to hang up all of the banners. I'm afraid that when his banner is seen by the parents that are complaining, that they will take it down in anger. I'm here asking that you pass a resolution or an ordinance that gives any parent that lives in Raton the opportunity to place a banner up for their senior regardless of where they attend school. That includes all surrounding area schools, online schools, and even homeschool students. They have all made quite an accomplishment in graduating, and they should be celebrated as well.
Are you by chance the only graduating senior this year for Maxwell? Are there others?
No, I'm in a class of 13.
13, oh, that's a pretty big class.
But I'm also not the only student that goes to school in Maxwell that lives in Raton. There are several others that I know that are in my class.
And I know in the past, other parents have said that they were told that they couldn't purchase a banner. And they just, I think they just accepted that. And I just feel that as a community member, I want to be able to drive through the streets of Raton and see my son's shining face up there and, you know, see that he's accomplished what everybody else in Raton High School has accomplished as well. So I think it should just be something that is inclusive of all students regardless of where they go to school, so.
Has this issue been brought to the school board as well?
It hasn't been brought to the school board. I did talk with the principal, and I did talk with Kristi Medina. And they said that because it's not a school activity or a school thing, that there wasn't really anything that they can do. And so I just want to make sure that, because right now I bought the banner. And as far as I know, it's going to go up. It's going to be put in the pile. There's nothing to indicate that the, that he's a Maxwell High School student or that the Raton High School students are from Raton High School. I just want to make sure that once it gets put up there, that we're protected. If somebody goes and takes it down, that there's some form of repercussion for them doing that. I'd like to hope that people aren't that petty and that rude, that they wouldn't do that. But I just, I just want to make sure that that's protected.
Do we, who is, who's, so what organization is organizing? I know it's not, the city didn't spearhead it, so I'm.
No, I think from what I understand, it's just whatever parent decides to take it on for a student that's in the senior class. So every year, it's just somebody different that does it. So it's not an organization or anything. As far as I understand, it's not. So, and I just, I just responded to a person that posted on Facebook asking if anybody wanted to purchase a banner. I'm like, yeah, I have a senior. I would love to have one up. And then that's when all of the complaints started coming in and, and then, yeah.
Jason, do you know who is in charge of that?
I'd be happy to address the commission wearing my second hat if that's appropriate. I would be happy to.
I believe it is. Yeah, please do.
It may not be the most popular, but I'm, you know, whenever her time is succeeded, then I'd be happy to.
Okay. Well, I certainly think that because you've purchased it, it becomes private property. So, you know, I think, I think we can definitely discuss, you know, keeping it safe, one way or another.
Okay.
Yeah. I don't know what our exact solution will be this close to graduation, but I think we can, we can look at the issue definitely.
Okay. I just want to make sure it's fair for everybody. And it's not, I mean, I'm just taking it upon myself to come and, you know, advocate for him and I, but also for all the other parents who have been told no, that they couldn't. And in the future, for the students that are told no in the future, I'd like for them to be included as well.
Right. And I think this is possibly an issue for homeschool students in a time or two. Okay, well, thank you for bringing it forward.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Personally, I, I don't see any problem personally that these kids have attained their, their degrees. I mean, their graduation, and they've gone through it. So I don't, I don't see anything wrong with it personally as a commissioner. I really don't.
Yeah.
Well, Mayor and Commissioner, I mean, I speak as just myself, President of the School Board, not on behalf of the board. But I was asked by our high school principal my thoughts. And I may be in the minority, and I'd applaud his accomplishments. I would. But as President of the Raton School Board, I disagree. I mean, this is a tradition for graduating Raton High School seniors. I would hope that Maxwell honors graduates of Maxwell High School in the same way. And I'm a big fan of Maxwell High School.
Sure.
But, you know, in a society that we scorn traveling to Walmart and taking our tax dollars out of town, I can, as the head of an organization, say, yeah, it's great. You know, I don't want to take anything away from this young man. But I had a graduating senior last year. My mother's the valedictorian of the class of 1968. Some of the people I love the most work in Maxwell schools. But I wouldn't have expected Maxwell to hang Abigail Phillips's banner on their street. Because we, we make choices. Whether it's attending homeschool, attending a different school, those choices are right for everyone. Is that a hill I'm willing to die on? Absolutely not. Does it look petty? Maybe. But, and that's not the intention. It's not singling out one person. But, I mean, this is the City of Raton. This is Raton Public Schools. I mean, there's kind of a symbiotic relationship between the two. But if we're endorsing that our schools aren't quote unquote "good enough" for this community, we've got bigger problems than just the banner on Main Street. And people can make those choices for a variety of reasons. And they, you know, I applaud them. But, you know, when, when they called me and said, "What do you think about putting banners up for the graduating seniors of Maxwell" without knowing even who it was or why? My immediate response was, "Why?" You know, that's not, we're not Maxwell. You know, like I say, not a hill to die on. You clearly own the poles. You know, it's a tradition. And, you know, if it doesn't mean that much to y'all, not a hill I'm willing to die on. But I think if as the head of an organization, I stood there and said, "Yeah, that's great, you know, send all of our kids somewhere else." That's bad for me, and it's bad for y'all as well. But, you know, teach their own. Thank you for your time.
May I, may I make a comment?
Yes.
So we actually, homeschool, I had a graduating senior last year. And he played sports for the school, and he wasn't included in the banners. And I wasn't necessarily upset or, either way, I didn't go, you know, I'm not criticizing what you guys are doing. I totally support your right to be able to do that. And I will have another one next year. Same thing, play sports for Raton High School and whatnot. And, you know, they've been really inclusive of us, and I've appreciated that. But to me, I'm, you know, I could go one way or the other on the topic.
Sure. Yeah.
I've been there, yeah.
Right. Mr. Berry, do we, do we do any, we don't really do anything to control these banners aside from allow them to be hung. Is that correct?
Mayor Protem, this is news to me that we even are having this conversation. You know, generally, we got a, you know, a call, hey, can we put, hang the banners? We said, yes, you can hang the banners. I think RPS helps with the process of hanging the banners. Haven't, didn't know this issue existed before right now. So I guess for my standpoint, I would look at the commission and if you all will give us some direction on, on how to go forward, that's what we will do.
I think the project, I mean, to me, the project is whoever's ever is spearheading the project for the schools.
Right.
I would say, to me, that's, it's a school decision. It's just being allowed to be put on our poles. That's my feeling. It's not a commission decision, but.
And it's not being done by the schools, it's being done by parents.
Parents.
And I think it started because during COVID, they started it.
So is there a parent group that does it?
It's usually just two or three individuals that have a senior going to school and start it.
Okay, yeah, it did start during COVID. Yeah, I see.
I think it's only been going on a few years.
Yeah, right. COVID, right, for when there was no actual formal graduation. Yeah. Yeah.
I still, I still feel that since they live in Raton and they're residents of Raton, that they should have, I don't see what the problem would be with anybody from, now, if you ask everybody from Simarone and Maxwell and Folsom and wherever they are to come and put them up here. If they don't live in Raton, then I would say, personally, I would say no. You know, I would say, but if you do live in Raton and you're paying taxes and you're, and you're doing that, then I don't see the problem with it. I really don't.
Perhaps if you'd be in the agenda, I have met a different meeting where we could actually take action on it.
We can't really take action today.
Other people.
But appreciate you bringing it forward. Is that something to think about? Okay. Thank you very much. All right, let's move on. Item 6A, presentation. FY '23 approved audit reports by SJT Group LLC. Mr. Berry.
Thank you, Mayor Protem, Mayor, Commissioner. We, I would call on City Treasurer here at this point, Michael Ann Antinucci, who generally coordinates our audit process. And we do have the presentation of the audit then to follow. But I will call on Michael Ann to introduce our guests to Raton. Thank you for coming.
Certainly.
And process.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem and Commissioner. We do have with us this evening Jeremiah Armijo. He is with the SJT Group LLC. This was our first year with this firm. And so he will be presenting the audit report for fiscal year '22 and then also any findings that resulted as a, that were a result of the audit for FY '22. So we do have a short PowerPoint presentation for you this evening. It was a real pleasure to work with SJT Group LLC this year. It was a little difficult just being the first year with a new audit firm. And so that was to be expected. But like I said, it was a real pleasure to work with their firm. And I think we were kind of able to correct and clean up some things that maybe had been carried over from previous years. So we are confident that moving forward with the FY '23 audit, we'd like to start a little bit sooner. And then that way, I think it'll be a lot easier process going into the next fiscal year audit. So it's my pleasure to introduce Jeremiah and turn the presentation over to him. Thank you for being here.
Welcome.
Thank you for having me. Good afternoon, Mayor Protem, Commissioners, Mr. Berry, Mr. Hio. So thank you guys for having me. As Michael Ann mentioned, my name is Jeremiah Armijo. I am a senior manager. I'm also the engagement team leader for the City of Raton's audit. So I am responsible for signing the audit reports. And so today, yeah, we'll talk about the fiscal 2022 year audits of the City of Raton as well as the Raton Public Service Company, which as a discreetly presented component unit of the city, they're required to have their own separate audit. And so we'll discuss both of those audits here in this presentation.
Excuse me, but just so you know, in case you didn't notice, we have Mayor Neil Sagata on the phone.
Oh, Mayor, how are you doing?
Doing fine, thank you.
Can you hear me okay?
I can hear you fine.
Awesome. Thank you, sir. So, so just a brief agenda. As you guys can see here, and there are some handouts too of the PowerPoints. You guys can follow along on paper as well if you would like. Today, we'll just talk about the service team from SJT Group. We'll go over some management responsibilities as it relates to the audit. I'll discuss what the auditor's responsibilities are. And then I'll go over some required communications that as your auditor, I'm required to discuss with you all. We'll talk about the actual audit results. And then at the end, I'll open up the floor for any questions, comments. And we can have a discussion on any questions you guys may have. So as you guys can see here on this slide, this is the service team from the SJT Group. We are a local firm out of Albuquerque, New Mexico. We specialize in conducting government audits, municipalities, state agencies. And this year, the service team was myself, as I mentioned. And then we had Mr. Joshua Trahio. He is the, he's a principal at the SJT Group. He was responsible for performing the quality control review. So as part of our standards, we, he reviewed our, my work, our work papers, made sure the financial statements and everything is done in accordance with our firm's standards as well as the auditing standards to make sure that things met the quality control standards. And then I had Mr. Jake Connor. He is a CPA and a manager with the SJT Group. He was out here with me supervising during the field work. We also had Mr. Dante Miletta, who is a senior audit associate with, audit associate with us. He assisted with supervising the engagement. We had Mr. Eric Gilpin and Mr. D'Angelo Neves as our staff members that were out here conducting the audit. But yeah, there's our team. There's over, you know, 50 years of experience on this audit team doing audits of local governments and municipalities. And so you guys were in good hands with our, with our audit service team. And so like Michael Ann mentioned, this was our first year of doing the audit. So thank you guys for allowing us the opportunity to provide audit services to you all. It was a sincere pleasure. And like you mentioned, during the first year, you know, there's, there's, normally, it's a little more inefficient than, than normal with getting to know each other, getting to know the processes, and just kind of coordinating things. But everything went really, really smooth for a first-year audit. Now, as far as management's responsibility for the audit, as you guys can see here, so management's responsible for establishing accounting policies and procedures. In fact, all of the policies and procedures, whether they're your personnel policies and procedures, your information technology policies and procedures. And so that really falls under the purview of management because they're responsible for establishing the internal control environment for the City of Raton and RPS. And so those policies also include ensuring that there's adequate internal control structure over your major transaction cycles. For the city and for RPS, those transaction cycles are such as accounts payable, payroll, your cash receipts, so money that's coming in. And then also, you know, compliance with state statutes and making sure that there's internal controls to ensure that the city's doing everything that they're required to statutorily. Management is also responsible for the accounting systems, which also include the underlying financial records. So that's making sure that all of the systems are adequate and tracking data and recording data accurately. And also that the transactions are adequately supported by documentation to support amounts recorded. And so, so, you know, as your auditor, we are not responsible for any of these items. So we do not, we're not responsible for your internal controls. We're not responsible for your accounting systems. This all follows under the purview of management. Now, the financial statements require the use of estimates. So, you know, for, for the city and for RPS, there are accounting estimates utilized in the financial statements. An example of an estimate would be your useful life on vehicles, on buildings, and making sure that those, you know, if you, if you buy a vehicle, you know, you depreciate that over many years. You know, that could be three to five years. Management comes up with that estimate of how long the vehicle will last. It could last more, it could last less. So there is a systematic depreciation or depletion of the assets. And so management's required for developing what that methodology is going to be. Another estimate would be an allowance for doubtful accounts. So if there's receivables, so if customers owe the city or RPS and there's, those collections are delinquent, then management must come up with a rationale for providing an allowance for doubtful accounts and estimating those in the financial statements because not all receivables may be collectible. And so management is responsible for those estimates that go into the financial statements. And then ultimately, management is also responsible for the preparation of the financial statements and the associated disclosures. So what that means is, you know, that the actual financial statements and all of the, you know, statement of net position, your, your income statement, your statement of cash flows, all of those different statements and the disclosures, those are management's responsibility to make sure that they conform with generally accepted accounting principles. Now, as the audit firm, we do assist with the preparation of those financial statements because we have the software and we're able to more efficiently help prepare the financials and get them into their form as you guys have all seen them. But those are not our financial statements. And management accepts full responsibility for those financial statements. And that's the last item there is that they're, at the end of the engagement, management signs a representation letter that basically outlines everything I've just discussed, that they accept full responsibility for the policies and procedures, internal controls, accounting systems, that they've been, that management has been forthcoming with all information that we've requested. And it's basically management's attestation to accepting full responsibility for all financial records and the financial statements and disclosures. Now, what is our responsibility as your auditor? Our responsibility is to provide an opinion in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles about whether or not the financial statements are materially correct. And you may wonder, what does materially correct mean? What that means is that the financial statements may have small, trivial, inconsequential errors in them. So, but those errors are, should be so insignificant that they would not change the decision of some, a user of your financial statements. Meaning, you know, if somebody was going to lend you money or if somebody was, if an entity was going to give you a grant and they relied on those financial statements, that those financial statements are accurate enough to where they would not change their decision if there wasn't a small error in the financial statements. So that's the definition of material, materially correct. Now, as part of the audit, we're responsible to provide reasonable assurance, which means we do not provide absolute assurance on the financial statements. Because, you know, absolute assurance would mean that we have to audit, we would have to audit 100% of everything. So, you know, as you guys can imagine, that would be impractical. We would be out here all year. We would be looking at every single transaction that the city and RPS processes. And, and as we know, that that's just not practical, practical, and that's not the purpose of the audit. So we, we perform our procedures based on sampling and a risk assessment for each of the organizations. So that means, you know, we go through and we prioritize risk related to the city and RPS. And we design our procedures accordingly to address those risks. And we do our procedures based on statistical sampling and, and making sure that we're able to support our opinion through these procedures. Now, in addition to that, we are required to obtain, as part of rendering our opinion and performing our procedures, we're required to gain an understanding of your internal controls. So that means that we hold interviews with personnel. We review policies and procedures. And we identify the key controls of the processes that the city and RPS follows. And then we verify that those internal controls have been implemented. So, excuse me. So what that means is, you know, if, if the city requires two signatures, two signatures on, on all checks that go to vendors or employees as, as a key control, then that means we would pick a sample of checks and make sure that they had the appropriate signatures on them to make sure that the internal controls have been implemented. So part one is getting an understanding of the control design through review of policies and procedures and holding discussions with personnel. And then the other side is verifying the implementation of those internal controls. And that's key to understand because we do not give an opinion on your internal controls. So we do not say that your controls are ineffective or effective. That would be, you know, a separate engagement that you're not required to have. And that would be, you know, that's just something that you guys are not required to have done as part of your audit. But in the event that we do identify internal control deficiencies, we are required to bring them to your attention. So as we're doing these internal control procedures, if we have issues or deficiencies, we would bring them to your attention. And they would be in the audit report. So as, you guys may know them as findings. So, so that's where we would communicate those to you. But by no means do we give an opinion on your internal controls. In addition to that, because you guys are a municipality within the state of New Mexico, you guys are required to follow certain state statutes as well as the state audit rule. And as part of that, we are required to perform tests of compliance with those state statutes and the state audit rule. Some of those examples include the procurement. Some of those examples include the procurement code, chapter thirteen of the New Mexico state statutes. We have travel in per diem. And then the state audit rule also has other requirements that the city is required to meet. And so as part of our audit, we do pick samples and we do test transactions that fall into these categories. And and we test for compliance and anything that any instances of noncompliance that we find are reported and communicated to you all through the audit report and the financial statements. So here are some of the required communications. This first part is for the city of Raton. So is as we're required to disclose the the audit adjustments that were done as part of the audit. As you guys can see here, there were fifty-one audit adjustments for the city's audit. Keep in mind, that may seem like a lot of adjustments, but a lot of these were routine because the city operates on the budgetary basis of accounting and and transactions are recorded on that basis. But in order to get the financial statements in accordance with GAAP, generally accepted accounting principles, there are adjustments needed for, you know, we for accruals such as gross receipts taxes. So as you guys may know, gross receipts taxes are for May and June are aren't received until after year end. So they're not received until July and August. And because those happen after the fact, we have to record an entry. And and Michael Ann provides those entries to record those gross receipts taxes in the proper period. So a lot of those adjustments were routine. However, as we'll discuss in some of the in in a couple of the future slides, is there were some adjustments to correct prior period errors with the financial statements. And and so what happened is, you know, in in order to audit ending balances of the city and R P S, we also have to make sure that beginning balances are correct because you can't have a right a correct ending balance if the beginning balances are not correct. So that's basically the balances at the end of last year. We have to make sure that those are correct in order to get to a correct ending balance. And so there were some corrections of prior period balances. And so that did result in a finding and we'll discuss that on on the upcoming slides. So the city did have seven reclassification adjustments. So these are adjustments for financial statement presentation only. So these are not entries that Michael Ann or the accounting staff or Robin will post in their records. These are just entries that we make on our end to present the financial statements in in the manner that they're required to under GAAP. An example of that would be the current portion of long-term debt. So all your N M F A loans, you know, they're all recorded in in their in their accounts in the aggregate as as far as what the total balance owed is. But for financial statement purposes, we have to break out the current portion, which is the amount that's due within the next year. So we have to break that out from the long-term portion and and make a reclassification entry to show the current portion of long-term debt. Same thing with cash and cash equivalents with the, you know, N M F A. There's a there's reserves held within M F A on your on your loan agreements. And some of those reserve accounts have both investments and cash in them. And they're all shown as one amount on the statement. But we have to break out the cash and actually put it with cash versus investments in the financial statements. And so that's a reclassification entry that we have to make, but you all don't have to do that. It's just for financial statement presentation only. Past adjustments, there were none. What a past adjustment is, is if we as the auditor find an error and we discuss it with management and management elects to not post the adjustment. Because remember, management, these are management's financial statements, balances and financial records. So we don't make the determination of whether or not to post anything. The only thing we do is render an opinion and management can elect to post something or not to post something. And depending on if they, you know, if it's big enough and they elect not to, it could affect our opinion. But overall, if we were to find an error and bring it to management's attention and they elect not to post it, that would be a past adjustment and we would have to discuss that with you all here. Just letting you know, hey, there were these errors that we found and and management elected not to post them. And we would obviously disclose that to you all. So I'm pleased to to report that there were none of those disagreements with management. If there were any significant disagreements with management, we would we would notify you all that there were disagreements and discuss the details of that with you all. I'm pleased to report that there were none. Consultations with other accountants. So as we're going through the audit, if if management elected to, in essence, get a second opinion from another CPA or another accountant, they that that's their prerogative and they would be able to do that. And and if they did do that, we would disclose the details related to any consultations with other accountants as well. But I'm pleased to report there were none of those either. Now, difficult overall difficulties performing the audit. Like like I mentioned, there in order to render an opinion on the ending balances, we had to get comfortable with beginning balances. And there were errors with the previously reported balances. And and we'll discuss those as we move on the future slides. But that, you know, that required substantial time on Michael Ann's part and the accounting staff to go back and do research on the prior period errors that we identified and making sure that, you know, those errors were legitimate and and needed to be corrected. And so that really slowed the audit down. And in fact, you know, it resulted in a late audit report for the city just because there was, you know, the the need to go back and reconcile prior period balances. So that was a difficulty and and that in is disclosed. You can see a more detailed schedule of the restatements at footnote fifteen in the city's financial statements. It'll break it down as far as what all of the errors were from the previous year. Was there a city, R P S slide before that? Sorry. Oh, you're okay. This slide, same slide, but for Raton Public Service Company. For Raton Public Service Company, there were eighteen audit adjustments. Once again, you know, many of these were routine. And they're, you know, and we were able to work through with Robin through those. None of those audit adjustments resulted in an audit finding. Like I said, they were routine and so we worked through those and and made sure they got recorded. Reclassification adjustments, there were five of those. Now, R P S did have two immaterial past adjustments. One was to correct an old interest payable amount that's sitting on the on the books of thirty-six thousand. And then the other one was to correct accumulated depreciation of fixed assets of eighty-six thousand. We may, you you know, if if these are still sitting there next year, we will discuss with Robin again and see if we want to just clean that up. But they were immaterial and so they didn't get posted. But, you know, again, they didn't affect the opinion of R P S and they are immaterial. So those are two past adjustments that that didn't get corrected in this year's financial statements. Disagreements with management, there there were none. Consultations with other accountants, also none. And then difficulties performing the audit overall, no. You know, again, if first year audits are always difficult in some regard, just because we're getting to know each other. But overall, no difficulties performing the audit. And their audit did get in to the state auditor on time in accordance with the deadline. So. Now, as far as new accounting standards this year for the city and for R P S, pretty significant one here was G A S B eighty-seven related to leases. So the governmental accounting standards require non-cancellable leases now of of of, you know, plant property equipment or underlying assets to be recorded on the books of the organization and also the liability associated with those. There was only one lease that was identified that fell within the scope of G A S B eighty-seven. And that relates to the building lease with the Raton Public Service Company. So the city shows a receivable for the for the lease with R P S. And R P S shows a liability and a right to use asset for for the use of the building. And these are both described in in the city's financials as well as R P S's financials. And and those are footnotes one and eleven for the city and footnotes one and seven for R P S. The city does have other leases, but, you know, they either have termination clauses in them or therefore intangible, you know, like water rights and different things like that that are out of the scope of G A S B eighty-seven. So those weren't included in the financial statements because they're not within the scope of that standard. Now, as far as the audit results are concerned, both R P S and the city received unmodified opinions on the financial statements. That's a clean opinion. That is the best opinion you can receive on your balances and and your financial statements. So that is a that's a very good thing. So so good job to to, you know, Robin and Michael Ann and and everybody else involved related to the financial statements and balances. We were able to give a clean opinion on those. Now, as far as internal control deficiencies, we did have two this year. The first one is for the city of Raton, there was a financial close and reporting finding. And that finding relates to the the necessary prior period corrections that had to be done. And so so just to run through those real quick, we had to correct accounts receivable in the amount of seventy-one thousand dollars approximately. For R P S, the residual income transfer from last year, they sent over seventy-one thousand as a result of the excess income that they have that they're required to send over to the city. That was not recorded in fiscal year twenty-one, which it should have. This year's residual income did get reported for twenty-two. It's just we had to move last year's into the proper period and that was seventy-one thousand. Oh, Water Works, I'm sorry. Sorry, sorry. So, yeah, it was Water Works, I'm sorry. So. Sorry about that, guys. Then we also had to correct for the city in the amount of eight point six million, the equity interest in R P S. So as I mentioned, R P S is a discreetly presented component unit. So it has its own set of financial statements. It issues, it's a it's in essence a legally separate organization. So the city has an interest in that organization. And so the city has to show their interest in R P S. And it's basically the net position of R P S, their their equity that R P S has. The city shows that interest in their financial statements and that was eight point six million at the end of last year. That the standard G A S B sixty-one requires that this interest be presented that way. And it was not presented in the financial statements last year. So we had to record that in the city's financial statements. Now, that was definitely material, hence why there is a material weakness because eight point six million is definitely material to the city. And then when you take into account all the other adjustments that I'm going to run through here, these are material amounts and so it results in a material weakness. We had to correct capital assets, governmental activities. So the city's, you know, general fund and and all of the governmental funds, all of that activity as it relates to capital assets was, we had to decrease capital assets by one point five million. That's because there were some C I P's construction pro construction in progress projects that were completed, but they weren't removed from C I P and they were also recorded in the buildings and infrastructure. So they were in two places at once where they really should have just been transferred out of C I P and put into buildings and infrastructure. But the C I P did not get removed. And so therefore, these projects were in two places and therefore double recorded. And so that was one point five million. And in addition to that, Raton Water Works, we had to increase capital assets by three hundred and thirteen thousand. So what we're required to do is we get detailed listings of all your capital assets and we compare them to the financial statements and we make sure that those amounts recorded agree to detailed schedules of your equipment and property and and all of that good stuff. And it ended up being that the the listing was higher by three hundred and thirteen thousand versus what was in the financial statements. So we had to make an adjustment to increase the assets in that instance and it was three hundred and thirteen thousand. Sanitation, same thing. We had to get the deep detailed listings, compare those to the financial statements of the prior year. Those were, and and as a result, we had to decrease capital assets of the sanitation fund by two hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars. So as you guys can imagine, there was a lot of cleanup related to capital assets. And it took, you know, quite a quite a bit of research on Michael Ann's part to get that all ironed out. And and we ultimately were able to do so. But, you know, there were pretty significant amounts of capital assets that had to be adjusted to to get them correct and and agree in in agreement with the detailed listings. There was also a correction to accounts payable for sanitation in the amount of fifty-one thousand. We had the, we had to remove that accounts payable as it was part of a previous audit adjustment that got recorded. But you have to reverse it in the next period and that didn't get reversed. So it just sat there on the books of the of of the sanitation department. And so we had to take that out and and get that corrected. In addition, the the last adjustment for related to a prior period was the correction of the landfill liability. So you all have, as you all know, may know, there is a liability that the city is required to record to ensure that the landfill is properly monitored post closure and making sure that there are adequate resources to make sure the landfill gets closed down in accordance with state statutes and federal laws and regulations. And so there is a liability associated with that. And, you know, the liability comes from the actuarial financial assistant estimate summary each year. And there was a difference between that twenty-one summary, financial assurance summary for the landfill and what was recorded on the books. And it was the li the liability was understated by three hundred and fourteen thousand dollars. So we had to true that liability up to the financial, the actuary assessment, actuarial assessment for the landfill. And so again, that was three hundred and fourteen thousand dollars. So when you add up all of these adjustments, these are very material and therefore warranted a material weakness related to financial close and reporting. And that finding, if you're reading along in the financial statements, it's at twenty twenty-two dash zero zero one. Now, significant deficiencies, the city did not have any significant deficiencies. However, R P S did have a cash reconciliation, a significant deficiency. And it relates to the bank reconciliations at year end. So R P S, you know, for budgetary reasons, does interbank transfers. So they from one account, from one from the the operating to the capital reserve account, they they move money around in accordance with their budgets. And the reconciliations did not reflect those interbank transfers. So there were cash in total was correct. It's just for the individual bank accounts, they didn't reflect the interbank transfers. And so there were, within the individual accounts, the reconciliations were were incorrect. But in total, when you look at everything, because it's going between bank accounts. So it's all there, it's just the different accounts didn't reflect the proper activity at year end. And we've discussed that with Robin and so she's got a game plan to make sure that the reconciliations properly reflect any interbank activity when when they're when the reconciliations are performed. So those are the two internal control deficiencies related to R P S and the city. In addition to that, we are required to report any compliance findings with state statutes. There were three of them, two related to the city and one for R P S. The first one is related to the city and it relates to travel and per diem. So for Raton Water Works, there was one employee who received mileage reimbursement at fifty-five cents for two hundred and twenty-six miles traveled. The pol the city's policy at the time was a reimbursement rate of fifty-three point five cents. So it was off by a cent and a half. And so that is kind of, you know, what it is. The 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 policies must be followed by the city. And so so that was obviously not in compliance with state statute or city policy. And I know it it had to do with the forms being used. And so there was just, the city did ultimately change their policy. And so during that changeover, the incorrect form was used. However, it was it was caught by us and so we were required to report that under that state, that state requirement. The next one for the city relates to a late report. So, you know, as we've discussed ad nauseam related to the audit adjustments of the prior period, this caused us to have to do, you know, have have Michael Ann do more reconciliations related to capital assets and the other errors identified. So the report did not make it in by December fifteenth. the report did not make it in by December fifteenth. Um, and so, we've subsequently got that in. The state auditor has approved it. It's now public record, and so it's now in. However, the, uh, the, the requirement to have it in by December fifteenth was, that deadline was missed. And, uh, so that's required to be reported as well. Um, for RPS, they had one compliance finding, and it relates to lack of supporting documentation. So, as I mentioned, we test compliance, we test transactions, and we have to make sure that all transactions recorded have adequate supporting documentation, such as purchase orders, invoices, receipts, to support the amounts recorded. Um, we found three transactions, uh, in what we tested that did not have, uh, adequate source documentation to support the transaction. Um, one was in the amount of four thousand one hundred and thirteen dollars for supplies. An invoice couldn't be provided, and we couldn't identify, uh, what was, what that four thousand dollars of supplies actually was. Um, and then, we had three fuel transactions totaling a hundred and twenty-three dollars. Um, did not have the fuel receipts so that we could verify, uh, the purchase of the fuel, uh, for, for those three purchases. Um, and so those two amounts totaled to four thousand two hundred and thirty-six dollars. Um, so, so those were your, the, the findings for, for the city and, and RPS. Um, and, uh, next year, we will follow up on these findings and see what progress has been made, and hopefully, you know, um, the, the city and RPS can get these resolved. Uh, so, in addition to all of that testing that I've described and the findings related to that, the city also receives substantial federal awards, so federal grants. And for fiscal year twenty-twenty-two, the city received one point eight million, uh, in, or expended one point eight million in federal awards. So, anytime you spend more than seven hundred and fifty thousand of federal grant money, you have to have a single audit. So, we have to perform an audit of your federal grants. Um, and so, we do an assessment of what your major programs are, and we have to test the major programs. The city only had one major program this year, and it was the CDBG, um, the, the Community Development Block Grant, and that, uh, the amount expended under that grant was seven hundred and ninety-two thousand. And so, that was the downtown infrastructure project, um, that was going on, uh, south of Third Street or south, south Third Street. Um, and so, uh, that was your major program. So, we're required to test compliance with that CDBG program, and I'm pleased to report that the city complied in all material respects, uh, with the direct and material compliance requirements of CDBG. Um, and so, you guys did receive a clean opinion on that program and also your, uh, your single audit. Now, you could get a clean opinion on the, on the program and also have compliance findings. So, there could be findings, um, as a result of that audit, but I'm pleased to report that there were no, uh, compliance findings related to that, to that program as well. So, so kudos to everybody involved there in, in managing that project. I know that's a big project for you all, and there's a, you know, there's a lot of, lot of requirements and administrative, uh, y- you know, burden related to, to managing the project, but you guys did, did an excellent job, and there were no, um, no issues related to, to your federal award programs noted. All right. So, that's my presentation. Um, here is the contact information for myself as well as Mr. Josh Trahill. Uh, please don't hesitate to reach out to us if you have any questions, you know, whether the audit's going on or not. You know, we're available year-round for any questions or, um, a- an- any, uh, anything you feel we can be of assistance, uh, uh, regarding. We are available. So, so please don't hesitate to, to reach out to us if you feel the need to. But, again, it's my sincere pleasure, um, to provide audit services to you all, and, and I, and I sincerely appreciate the opportunity, and so does the SJT group. So, um, thank you, guys, and, and, yeah, open up the floor for any, any questions or comments.
I, I know I've heard nothing but good comments about, uh, the staff, from the staff and management that you guys have been great to work with, so.
Awesome. And likewise, yeah, we, we try. You know, the audits can be painful. So, we do our best to help facilitate and make them as painless as possible, and, and so, no, it was, uh, it was definitely our pleasure. So, thank you, guys.
That's good. All right. Any other?
Yes, sir. It's already that time again, right? It's already coming right back around. Yeah, exactly. But, uh, yeah, that's all I have.
Anything else? Mayor Sagata, do you have anything?
No, no talent.
Okay.
How about from RPS or Ratone Water Works?
Well, I know we're gonna be, I'm gonna be calling you to get some other things taken care of, so I'll be putting him to work.
Yep, absolutely.
But it was a pleasure working with you.
Yes, it was.
Thank you very much.
It was a little crazy, but it was, it was good.
Yep. Audits often are, right? They're a crazy process, so they're, they're stressful. So, I understand.
Right.
Thank you, Jeremiah.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you, guys, yeah.
Thank you for coming up and presenting.
Yeah, my pleasure. My, my pleasure.
And we'll get on with the business of, um, approving it.
That's scheduled.
Yes. Item B, deliberate and act on resolution twenty-twenty-three dash fourteen, acknowledgement of FY twenty-two audit.
So, more?
It's been moved and seconded to, uh, approve a resolution of twenty-twenty-three dash fourteen, acknowledging the audit. All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Aye. And there's no opposed. Thank you. Motion passes. Item C, deliberate and act on approval of March twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-three regular meeting minutes.
I wasn't here, but I just, in, on item one, call the order. It says that, were you the one that called the meeting to order?
Yeah.
Okay. I did see some.
I was at the last meeting.
Oh, yeah, you were. That's right.
That's what I thought. I thought he was leaving the meeting. So, I think that just needs to be, because the previous meeting, I think, was you.
It was me. It was, yeah. You're right.
So, just, that was my only correction. Otherwise, I would make a motion to approve the minutes from March twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-three.
Okay. Very good. Moved and seconded to approve. March twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-three regular meeting minutes as corrected. All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
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 There are no opposed. Motion passes. We didn't need to have, um, Water or RPS approve the resolution on A, did we? Did we do, did I do that appropriately?
I believe so, yes.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Yeah.
All right.
It'll actually be approving a similar resolution with their boards.
With, all right. Very good. All right. Present, item D, presentation on Skill Sharp Continuum Coordinator, Daniel, Miss Danielle Vanderkoen, Mrs. Thank you for your hard work as you're walking up here.
Thank you. Thank you. Hi, good evening, um, Commissioners and also Mayor Sagata on the phone, and Mayor Protem, City Manager Scott Berry, and Miss Desiree Trahill Deputy Clerk. And thank you to Michael Ann Antonucci for all your support with Skill Sharp and als- always assisting with our presentations. Um, so I'm real excited to be here this evening. I am here on behalf of the Skill Sharp Workforce Training System. It is the workforce initiative, and it is to help individuals to attain skills. Um, what's really nice about this online component is it's accessible in your own home, on any device, a cell phone, a computer, a laptop, anything that you're comfortable using. So, we'll move forward. Um, this quarter report is in correspondence of the Center for Community Innovation, um, with the Northeastern New Mexico Workforce, also contract with the city of Ratone, and advancing the workforce. Metrics learning is a game changer for public sector partners. Um, it's really great in offering a skilled talent pipeline, training and education that matters, solutions that align with the workforce innovation, and Opportunity Act, WIOLA, connecting with individual career goals, personalized learning plans. We started with Skill Sharp as a pilot project last year in two thousand twenty-one, and since, uh, or I'm sorry, we started with it as a pilot project, two thousand twenty-one going into two thousand twenty-two. And moving forward, it since has advanced with career pathways and working with employers and also working with the schools. So, Skill Sharp is a free training system available at no cost to all citizens in Ratone, New Mexico, who are sixteen years of age and older. Skill Sharp provides administration certification demand forecasting within the zip code of eight-seven-seven-four-zero. Skill Sharp also offers strong metrics learning management with help and support available twenty-four-seven. The system's really nice and easy to access. If anyone's interested, that very first slide, all you have to do is go to that website, and then you can register yourself, um, if interested in using the metric system. And once you put in Ratone and eight-seven-seven-four-zero, it will then direct it to my position and my email where I can, um, track and then do onboarding and continue to offer support. The way that we're utilizing it is we are going out and presenting it to the workforce, um, to employers and employees, and also our public schools. And we are registering individuals, um, as a, as a user, I will go in and as administration, I'll register the user and according to their interests. Um, I can even add courses to their plan or career pathway. I can also research and go in and do presentations with the workforce. The city of Ratone did contract the Northeastern New Mexico Education Foundation, doing business as the Center for Community Innovation, to utilize Skill Sharp training to support workforce initiatives. The Skill Sharp training system offers one thousand contracts per year, and we still currently have eight hundred and eighty-six contracts available. But, again, starting with fourteen to moving forward to where we're at today, we have advanced and inclined. But, additional to that, if you look at it like a college course, it's free. They can get certification in IT tech, accounting, um, maybe your employee is just struggling and using PowerPoint or, um, Google Docs or Microsoft Word. There's trainings for all that as well. Thank you. So, this is the really nice platform that explains it all. Um, it is a WIOLA platform. Six thousand courses of soft skills, Spanish, Chinese, eighty-five percent course, mobile compatible, nine hundred Kanexa prove it assessments, ten career pathways, two hundred in-demand occupations, skill assessment and skill gap remediation, a hundred and thirty industry certifications, skill up program expands metrics learning, access to community partners. Um, there is a game-based learning mobile app and geographic solutions. So, underneath the metrics, it does offer the individual assessments to be able to see what skills you already obtained, what skills you might need to upskill in, and then a certification in a timely manner, classics in specific fields, support and help, and a pre-test, post-test component, and a certification that you can download immediately and be able to stack your resume. So, in quarter one, we did start with the fourteen users, um, promotion materials developed, system support. We learned the system. We were able to assist workforce with flyers, and we began as a pilot project. Uh, quarter two, we moved up to fifty-five users, business meetings, small group orientations, promote the system, research needed skills for specific jobs, and project used by users. Uh, today, to current date, there is a hundred and fourteen active users in each different training system, presentations and developing specific support and criteria according to business need, large group orientations of forty-five or more. We've done three of those to date, implement the system, register courses for employees and employers, and we've also been projecting future need for the matrix learning program. What that is broken down as is we are working with Ratone Public Schools. We've done a soft introduction to all juniors and seniors. Seniors are able to utilize it, um, to be able to stack their resume, or if they need courses for college that aren't being offered, and it would be a support to be able to learn something as simple as Google Docs. They may use it for that. They can use it for any of their own interests. And then, the juniors, we're building to work with individuals within the school system to be able to build a criminology career pathway, and then also health career pathway. And that has taken more work than what we thought it would, but it's really moving forward, and I'm really excited because there's meetings in the school this Thursday to be able to develop that for next year. So, fostering, it also fosters employment growth. Uh, metrics learning is ideal fit for the employers, focusing on talent growth and works to strengthen the rose of Chamber of Commerce and other local champions of businesses, seeking to elevate economic prosperity with cost-effective resources. It also provides a survey tool that's able to identify available job openings and in-demand employer's skill sets, candidate matching within the database, job seeker skills analytics to determine skill gaps, target industry trends, and labor force participation. Skill Sharp also offers entry-level workplace skills in the following, as simple as business etiquette, communication, email protocol, and teamwork. Thank you to local businesses, agencies, and schools for using Skill Sharp, and thank you to the city of Ratone for all your support and for providing this to our community. And I do have just two other attachments. I just kind of want to move through it really quickly. It won't take us long. But, the other attachment is just kind of showing the really great support that is offered by Skill Sharp. Um, there's metric learning tutorial. Once you are registered in this online onboarding system and training system, you can go in and watch videos, and it will give you step-by-step guidance on how to use the system. There is IT support twenty-four-seven, and then it also gives us reports like this, um, right here. It shows that there is a contract of a thousand, and there's eight hundred and eighty-six remaining for the Center CI Skill Sharp, and that's under the Skill Sharp trainings. And then, under the prove it, which is a different training component, um, there's different trainings underneath that one that wouldn't be available through Skill Sharp, and it's showing the same amount. And then, it just gives a breakdown, a certification demand forecasting, and what the average salary would be for specific job openings. And so, we're able to promote different jobs and share that on the center's web page and also on the Facebook page to try to promote and help, you know, job openings as they open up as well. We've done a lot of that for the schools and city jobs. And then, there is a tutorial, and just, um, how do I do this? How do I do that? And how do I complete a course assessment? All that assistance is available through the Skill Sharp system as well. And then, there is also another attachment that I attached with all the skill soft courses that are available, and a catalog that provides more in-depth underneath IT, the specific programs and trainings that are available under IT. And we are encouraged when we go and promote the IT to share that you can take all of the training courses underneath that career pathway. Um, Michael Ann, if you'll go to page sixty, that's a really helpful page. But, if you go under the IT career pathway, you can take all the courses that are available, and then, of course, you'd have to go to your state level to take your certification test. Um, so what's really nice about this, too, is it just gives the, this, the breakdown of the course and then the courses that relate to it in this catalog. And that's everything I have today. Any questions?
Good job.
Yeah, good. Great job. Thank you.
Thank you. And I just want to thank you all for this great opportunity. I've really enjoyed the journey, and I'm excited to see where Skill Sharp goes next. Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
We appreciate the work you've done. We really do.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Mayor Protem, I'll just make a comment that, uh, you know, this, this is, uh, six thousand, uh, uh, courses available, free to the public.
Free, right.
We're underutilizing it. Obviously, we have a lot of contracts that are, that are not, that are available, that are not used. And, you know, I, I don't know, uh, uh, what else you could ask for. This is a, this is a, a great opportunity for, uh, for, uh, people out there, business owners or, uh, people looking at
Professionals, right.
Making more money. You know, that's what this translates to. So, just to let the public know. And I think that's part of the issue, is just getting the word out to the public that this is available in Ratone. Free.
Free.
Yeah.
And, uh, coordinator who takes her job very seriously and does a good job at it. Absolutely. Thank you.
Absolutely. Great job by Danielle.
Yeah.
Good girl.
So, hopefully, you know, the word will spread that it's available and...
Yes. And like I said, if anyone's watching the Facebook page tonight, just go to that first slide, plug in the address into your computer, and you can register instantly. It's really easy. If not, contact me. My phone number's everywhere. Um, my email is Danielle@centerci.org. My phone number is five-seven-five-two-four-zero-nine-nine-seven-seven. As soon as I receive any information of anyone interested, I will register the user within twenty-four hours and no later than that.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
All right. That deserves applause, really. Okay. Item E, introduction of ordinance number ten-twenty-two, authorizing, understand its lease rather than sale. Is that correct?
That's correct, Mayor Protem.
Of the Coors Building, um, real estate to Moss Adventures. Mr. Berry, I'll let you take it from there.
Mayor Protem? Mayor Protem, Mayor, City Commission, this is an introduction of ordinance number 1022. We have talked about this item previously and I will summarize our previous conversation. The city of Raton is the owner of the Coors Building, that's a historic building located in downtown Raton on South First Street, the historic railroad district. City of Raton issued a request for proposals for an economic development project with the building under a statute called the Metropolitan Redevelopment Code. It really is the first, and, and let me back up and say that in 2015, the city of Raton designated generally the downtown area, the original town site of Raton as a metropolitan redevelopment area. So by doing that, that would allow the city of Raton to utilize the incentivized program under the Metropolitan Redevelopment Code. This is Raton's first MRA project, and I think it's, it's timely here, so we're looking at using the Coors Building to promote industry, develop trade, economic activity, create jobs, expand the local tax base, and contribute to our goal of downtown revitalization in Raton. We did get four proposals as we discussed, and a selection committee worked for several months on the process, conducted interviews of, of the, the top-ranking proposals, and they were unanimous in selecting the proposal of, of Moss Adventures LLC. So we have brought you a draft of this ordinance that's required by the statute that we mentioned, the Metropolitan Redevelopment Code, and basically it says that we will lease the building to Moss Adventures over a period of five years at a, at an amount of about $100 per year. So we're not doing this to collect rent, we're doing this to create jobs and promote economic development, and Moss has given their proposal that says that they would develop, using the facility, a multipurpose adventure center, a screen printing shop, and a hostel, meaning a, a housing unit upstairs. So we're excited about the project, we're excited to move on, this is an introduction. There will be a lease agreement coming to you, still working on that, but the lease agreement will reflect the terms that I just summarized for you. As you know, we would conduct a public hearing before final adoption of the ordinance, and we would estimate that the final adoption will come to the commission for potential action the first meeting in May.
All right, good.
I'll hold up there and answer any questions you might have. We do have Sandra Young from Moss Adventures here. Sandra, thanks for coming to our meeting.
Thank you.
And for everything you're doing in Raton.
Thank you. So tonight, we're just introducing the ordinance, correct? I'll make, I'll make motion to introduce ordinance number 1022, authorizing the lease of the Coors Building Real Estate, Moss Adventures LLC is authorized by the New Mexico Metropolitan Redevelopment Code.
It's been moved and seconded to introduce the ordinance number 1022, authorizing the lease of the Coors Building to Moss Adventures. All those in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. All right, did you have anything you wanted to say, Sandra, to us? We'd listen if you do.
No, I just wanted, the, the process has been great so far. I've met with Mr. Berry several times, and we're, we're working through all of the processes this, I understand, is when the first, you know, RFP is doing this, so.
Right.
It's, it's been a very open and interesting transaction so far, and we're just really excited to get in there and get our elbows slightly.
Right, well, thank you for your patience, as even small city government is moved slowly. All right, item F, deliberate and act on board appointments for extraterritorial zoning commission. Mr. Berry?
Mayor Protem, Mayor and Commission, we do bring to you an application, this would be for an open seat on the Extraterritorial Zoning Commission. And we'll just briefly talk about the Extraterritorial Zoning Commission. There is extraterritorial zoning through a joint powers agreement between the city of Raton and Colfax County that generally brings zoning to that area that's outside the municipal boundaries, but in the, the designated extraterritorial zone in anticipation that sometime in the future, it would become part of the city, would be incorporated and be within the municipal boundary. So we work with the county on zoning issues in this area, generally a three-mile buffer from the city limits, and under that joint powers agreement and the provisions of, of the applicable state statute, the city commission appoints two members to the Extraterritorial Zoning Commission. The county appoints two members to the commission, and then those four, in turn, pick a fifth member that does not live in the extraterritorial zone. And so we do have one opening that would be a city commission-appointed position, and I would tell you that this would, this opening came because of the passing of Charles Hyde, and we want to acknowledge that Mr. Hyde served on the Extraterritorial Zoning Commission for many years, as well as the city's planning and zoning commission, so we want to recognize his, his service. You do have an application to fill this seat in your packet submitted by Michael S. Pies, who did attend our last meeting and then subsequently did submit the application which you have in front of you currently.
Make a motion to accept the application?
Second. All right, it's been moved and seconded to accept the application of Mr. Michael Pies for the Extraterritorial Zoning Commission. All those in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any further comment? Motion passes, thank you. All right, deliberate and act on award of RFP for on-call civil engineering services. Mr. Berry?
Mayor Protem, Mayor, City Commission, in your packet, you also have a recommendation for award. This is, this is in regard to the city of Raton on-call engineering services contract. Request for proposals had previously been issued by the city of Raton, that's RFP number 2023-C, and this, under state statute, this is a qualification-based request for proposals. A committee was appointed to review the four proposals that were received, and the committee did make a selection, and that would be to our local firm, Engineering Analytics, Inc. So we had very qualified proposals, all good engineers, but we appreciate the, the work that Engineering Analytics Incorporated has done over numerous years under this on-call contract. We just reached a period of time where we had to reissue the RFP and open that back up again. And so that is the recommendation that you have, is summarized by the memorandum from the city clerk and treasurer. How this works, an on-call contract is, we will have a master services agreement, and then as projects come forward, we will bring to you a service authorization that will identify a scope of work for a particular project and a fee or a method of pricing the services. So that's not included in the master services agreement, but what you would be considering is awarding that on-call engineering services contract, a master services agreement, to Engineering Analytics. It would not include, of course, the scope of work or the fees, it would have a fee schedule in case that we're charged by the hour by a, a, a certain deliverable, but that's what you're considering here tonight.
All right, good. Are there any questions regarding this?
I'll make motion to approve the RFP award for on-call civil engineering services to Engineering Analytics, Inc.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the award for on-call services to Engineering Analytics. Are there any other comments or discussion? All those in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? I don't think there were. Karen, did you have anything you wanted to say to address us?
Yes, I would like to say that we've really enjoyed working with the city of Raton for the last eight, nine years, and, and really appreciate the opportunity to continue working with the city of Raton. Scott Berry and Jason Phillips and Michael Ann have been fantastic to work with, as well as Desiree, she's always such a smiling face behind the counter, which is nice, but fantastic people to work with. Commissioners, we think that you guys are, you guys do a great job, you do a lot of hard work for the city, and we appreciate that as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for your hard work, we appreciate it. All right, item H, deliberate and act on resolution 2023-16, grant easement.
Mayor Protem?
Yes.
We would still need to take a vote on that previous item, I think.
I thought we did.
We did.
We did.
She tells me we're good, so, sorry.
Yes.
We, we did vote on that one, yeah. And then we asked Karen to
Lost, lost, lost focus there, but, sorry.
That's okay, I understand. When you skip that late in the day, you know it happens. All right, back to resolution, item H, resolution 2023-16, grant easement to Inbank, adjacent to lots 10, 11, and 12, block 10 of the original town site. Mr. Berry, you want to explain this one?
Mayor Protem, Mayor, City Commission, we do have a request from Inbank for grant of easement. This is related to the part of the structure that is attached to the Yucca Hotel, a historic downtown building that is in a C1 zone, which we require, which has zero setbacks, basically structures are built on the property line. At Inbank, there is a, an HVAC structure that is, is built in the alley that is dedicated city of Raton right-of-way, I think the encroachment is about three feet. And while we're talking about it, Inbank has asked for an easement for the sign that is attached to the building, but projects out over the, the public right-of-way. And then the last issue is in regard to the Giordano Building, the city of Raton is gaining ownership of the Giordano Building, we haven't completed that transaction yet because it hinges on the brownfield program completion of some environmental review, but we do anticipate that the property would be transferred to the city of Raton, and there is also a structural encroachment on the Giordano Building. Inbank has asked the city, and asked by extension the city commission, to approve an easement for those three encroachments. You see a legal description of the encroachment, and commission, you all have a, a drawing from their surveyor that illustrates the encroachment. The, the encroachments are structural in nature, there's, meaning there's no really undoing those, they do not, from our review, present any kind of a hazard or an obstruction or in any way interfere with city operations. And I think that, well, my recommendation would be, to you, would be for granting of the easement to Inbank. This is one way that we can handle an encroachment. There have been instances where we have vacated part of the right-of-way to handle an encroachment too, in this case, I think the easement is a good solution.
All right, good.
I make a motion to approve resolution 2023-16?
It's been moved and seconded to approve resolution 2023-16, grant of easement to Inbank, adjacent to lots 10, 11, and 12, block 10 of the original town site. Is there any further discussion or question? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Aye. And there are no opposed, make, motion passes. All right, item I, deliberate and act on construction contract between city of Raton and HO Construction for the I-25 East Frontage Road Reconstruction Project. Mr. Berry?
Mayor Protem, Mayor and Commission, you recall at our last meeting, the city commission did award a, a contract for construction for the project as described to HO Construction, and we did say at that meeting that we had grant funds that required a match from the city, if we exceed the grant funds plus the minimum match, those funds would come from city funds, and we want to stay in the budget on the project, but we also stated that the bids were over that budget and that we would have to do some negotiations with the contractor to get the project within budget. Now, as a part of the city's action, you did award a construction contract, however, we limited that to a, a construction amount, not to exceed $1,442,000, and in our course of deliberations, I have brought you a contract that would exceed that amount. So it would exceed that by, and I'm going to use some approximate dollars here, but about $78,000. Now, there are two items that are in the contract, concrete light bases, and then also electrical conduit that the Board of Raton Public Service Company has said they would fund. This is related to a street lighting system, and they'll fund those two items that are in the bid, they'll also add work and, and the rest of the lighting system to the project, but if we look at those two bid items, that's $50,000 and $50,400. Now, for, for myself, as being a part of the negotiation, I want to bring out one construction item and give you a recommendation on this. The way we bid the project was a two-inch thickness of a, a final asphalt surfacing, and after our deliberations with the contractor, spending some time really looking at the project, I feel it's important that we thicken that up to three inches, just from a structural standpoint, and so I'm going to ask you to provide some additional dollars for the project so that we can increase the thickness of the asphalt pavement to three inches. The engineers did talk to the contractor on this issue, and we feel like we got a fair price to do that, and again, talking in round, round dollars, I'd like to add, well, get your authorization to use an additional $28,000 of city of Raton money, bring that to the project to get that, that structural thickness of asphalt. So that's what you would be agreeing to in, in approving this agreement, and that's reflected in the dollars that you see in the agreement, is it would cost you an additional $28,000 that would come from the street fund.
Is that including grocery receipts tax?
That would be including grocery receipts tax, yes, Commissioner.
I think that sounds like a good plan, I mean, I, I trust your judgment very much, and appreciate RPS being able to work with us on the project as well, very much. I would make a motion to approve the construction contract between the city of Raton, Naples Construction for the I-25 East Frontage Road Reconstruction Project, knowing that we will be around $28,000 over budget that would come from the street fund.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the construction contract between city of Raton and HO Construction. Is there any further discussion or additional questions? All those in favor, vote by the sign of aye. All those in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
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 Thank you. Oh, that was unanimous, so no opposed. Motion passes. Item J, deliberate and act on NMDOT grant agreement number RTN dash twenty-three dash zero-two. New electric vault design. I believe this is, has to do with the airport.
Mayor Protown, Mayor Commission, uh, we do have two items, uh, on the agenda for your consideration. Two different projects at Raton Municipal Airport. Uh, and we're talking about, uh, grant offer from, uh, New Mexico State Aviation. We would anticipate that subsequent to this, we'll get a, a grant agreement from Federal Aviation Administration that will come to you for your, uh, approval. Both of these are for engineering design only. And so we'll come back, uh, following, uh, the engineering design. It's probably in the subsequent fiscal year, uh, with, uh, construction grant offers. But we are looking at, uh, engineering design for, for both items. We'll talk about, uh, taxiway B under item K. But under J, that would be for the redesign of an electrical vault. As we stated, uh, underground electric service to the airport generally comes into this vault. We've had some issues, uh, with it and it's just obsolete components. So, uh, we are looking at, uh, replacing the underground vault and the components in it to, uh, to, for safety reasons and for reliability reasons. Now, you have the, uh, state aviation, uh, grant offer, uh, in your packet. Generally, I would say that as we've talked about before, uh, Federal Aviation Administration would offer 90% of design and construction. And then the state, state aviation will offer 5% of the amount. And local funds, uh, would, would amount to 5% of the project as well. But you have a, uh, a grant offer here, uh, from state aviation in which they would pay, uh, 9% and the City of Raton would pay 1%. Am I correct in saying that, Michael Ann? And so, uh, on a project that would total $82,209, uh, the state will pay $7,399. You would commit to $822, uh, by your consideration and your approval of this grant agreement. That would be, that would come from the general fund.
Sounds like a bargain. Yeah. Sounds like a real bargain for additional safety.
Sure.
I make a motion to approve NMDOT grant agreement number RTN dash twenty-three dash zero-two taxiway B reconstruction design.
I think we're on item J.
Oh, J, yeah.
I make a motion to approve NMDOT grant agreement number RTN dash twenty-three dash zero-two new electric vault design.
Great.
Chad, could you tell them about the DocuSign?
Michael Ann just reminded me that now we are essentially signing these electronically. If you could include in your motion authorization for the city manager to sign on behalf of the City of Raton. It's a process called DocuSign.
All right. Do you want to just add, so moved?
Just second.
Mayor Sagada, since you seconded, uh, do you continue to agree? All right. It's been moved and seconded to approve NMDOT grant agreement RTN twenty-three dash zero-two for new electric vault design, including, uh, DocuSign for the city manager. All those in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye. Aye.
And, uh, sorry, I didn't ask if there's additional questions, but are there? All right, it was a unanimous aye, so, uh, we're all opposed. Uh, moving on to K, uh, grant agreement RTN twenty-three zero-three taxiway B.
Mayor Protown, Mayor City Commission, uh, everything that we said in the previous item is true. Here, this would be engineering design of taxiway B. Taxiway Bravo, uh, is parallel to our crosswind runway. So that's the shorter runway and a shorter taxiway. You'll remember, uh, that previously we had completely reconstructed taxiway Alpha several years ago. And now this comes up as one of our priorities, uh, here. And I guess the challenge is, uh, this taxiway crosses the 220 runway, the primary runway. And, uh, taxiway Alpha, that's where, that's, makes that a little more challenging. There's been some, uh, some federal rules on how you can cross, uh, taxi across the primary runway. So our engineers will address this. But engineering design only, we would plan construction in a, in a subsequent year. The state is offering, uh, well, the, the total project cost would be $122,148. The state is offering to pay $10,994. The cost to City of Raton would be $1,221. We would anticipate a grant offer from Federal Aviation Administration to be the remainder, $109,933. That will come subsequent to this action. Same thing, we would ask for authorization for the city engine, uh, the city manager to execute the grant agreement through the DocuSign, uh, electronic process.
I make a motion to approve and, uh, grant agreement, uh, twenty-three oh-three taxiway B and, uh, allow the city manager to
Use DocuSign.
To use the sign.
I'll second.
All right. It's been moved and seconded to approve grant agreement RTN dash twenty-three dash zero-three taxiway B reconstruction design. Are there any, uh, additional questions or concerns? All those in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
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 Vote was unanimous. Vote passes. Thank you. Item L, resolution, deliberate and act on resolution 2023 dash seventeen. Transportation Project Fund Application for Second Street Improvement Project.
Mayor Protown, Mayor and Commission, I would just generally say, uh, on this that, uh, this is a time of year when we submit, uh, a number of grant applications. That's what we're going to talk about under the next six items. And these specifically are for funding, uh, programs under the New Mexico Department of Transportation. I'd like to call in the Public Works Director, Jason Phillips, uh, to, uh, to present to you and answer your questions on the next six agenda items.
Mayor Protown, Mayor Commission, uh, thank you. Uh, so to start off with, we will be talking about, um, the Transportation Project Fund for the next six items. As you're probably aware, we began work on Sugar Reed Avenue this week, which starts the first dollar spend of $3.8 million worth of projects this summer. Uh, 95% of which is funded by the Transportation Project Fund. Not to be outdone, we decided we needed to ask for more money. So it's that time of year and we've identified projects. The TPF process has kind of two separate pools of money. One is roadway improvements and they earmark a small amount, uh, that they set aside for bridge improvements. So we've got a couple of applications for both. Uh, being that we already have three TPF projects in hand, it's, uh, unknown how receptive our applications are going to be because we've got the most out of anybody at NERPO. But the fact that we are in construction and we requested dispersal of funds for our first project today shows that, um, we're able to complete these projects and that's usually why we rank higher than everybody else is our ability to get them on the street and get them completed. So the first project, which we would consider our highest priority for the roadway projects is a project we're calling the Second Street Improvement Project. Um, it would span the entire length of North and South Second Street, which is a DOT highway. Uh, we've got a letter of support for the application from the Department of Transportation. And what we would use this $900,000 application for is to repair heaving sections of concrete, replace 15 wheelchair ramps, deal with medians that have heaved. We've got some sections of roadway that are in need of milling and replacement, some cracked ceiling, just a bunch of routine maintenance in some ways, but, uh, repair of a bunch of construction defects. Curbing gutter isn't really maintenance. These were issues in the original Second Street that were probably, um, poorly reconstructed. And now we're going to reconstruct it, hopefully with the help of NMDOT. So that application, which we would identify as our, uh, primary application, uh, comes to $900,523.48. Uh, we would provide a 5% match of $45,026.17. So the first item on the, the first resolution is the application of the grant itself. Just basically permission to acknowledge that we're going to apply for it. The subsequent resolution is requesting match waiver, which we would like to request match waiver. We've been unsuccessful in the past, but it's always worth a shot to, uh, ask again in hopes that we get it. Um, so that would be the subject items of L and M. And I guess I should pause there for any questions on these before we move into the next round of.
Eric, can we move on these? Uh, can we bundle them or?
I think since we're dealing with resolutions, it'd probably be cleaner if we go one at a time.
One at a time. All right. Very good.
I'll make a motion to, uh, adopt resolution 2023-17. Transportation Project Fund Application for Second Street Improvement Project.
All right, it's been moved and seconded to approve resolution 2023 dash seventeen TBF for Second Street Improvement Project. So, uh, are there any other additional questions or concerns? All those in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
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 Vote was unanimous. Motion passes. Thank you. Moving on to resolution 2023 dash eighteen.
I'll make a motion to adopt the resolution 2023-18, the match waiver request for the Second Street Improvement Project.
Very good. It's been moved and seconded to adopt resolution 2023 dash eighteen, match waiver request for Second Street Improvement. Are there any additional questions or concerns? All those in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
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 Vote was unanimous. Motion passes. Now, Mr. Phillips, will you explain the next one?
Yes, ma'am.
Resolution 2023-19.
So as we move on to 2023-19, this is again another application.
Except it's sad.
Yes, we use acronyms. Last time we had the drip project, this is the SAD project. It's, uh, an acronym for the Special Assessment District 18. That's why it's SAD 18. And it's sad that we have to reconstruct these streets because, uh, we spent good money building them. The short story of Special Assessment District 18 and the streets that were constructed in that timeframe are, uh, difficult decisions were made due to budgetary considerations in, uh, that assessment district. Uh, that involved removing base course from most of the project, if not all the project. So, um, in some areas evidently there was better subgrade and others there was worse. In my opinion, it's always a bad idea. Base course is the foundation on which you build a house. And, uh, no matter how pretty is it on top, if the foundation soils aren't solid, you don't have a chance. So we have literally dozens of SAD 18 streets out there in various states of disrepair. Some of which with better subsoil conditions may be likely to, uh, benefit from the chip seal process that we use throughout the city. These three target streets are not conductive to chip seal. They've got, uh, transverse and lateral cracking that is, uh, rhythmic every 20 feet. And they, uh, are going to require complete reconstruction, which is very expensive. So the first round of, of SAD reconstruction, um, we've identified Ternasia, Hogan, and Arnold Streets as not being conductive to chip seal. So essentially, we would strip the existing asphalt off. We would go down six inches through the native clay. We would treat the subgrade with a cement, uh, treated, treatment in order to stabilize it, put base course and then three inches of asphalt. Probably the way they should have been constructed originally. Um, but it's a very expensive process. So those three streets alone would cost an application in the tune of about $1.2 million, of which we would have $60,000 in matching funds. Uh, this is our secondary application. I, if I was a betting man, I would probably put our odds at 30% or less that the secondary application gets there. But, uh, we've got a lot of these to bite off. And over the next 10 to 15 years, we are going to have to start reconstructing these one at a time, three at a time. So no better place to start than here. There, you could throw a dart at Special Assessment District streets and probably choose to reconstruct those. But, uh, these are long streets and, you know, on, on some grades and, and neighborhoods that I think would benefit from it. And, um, so we are, would like your support in, uh, submitting this application to the TPF Project Fund as well. And I gladly answer any questions if anybody has them.
I'll make a motion to adopt resolution 2023-19.
I'll second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded to adopt adopt resolution 2023 dash 19, TPA, or TPF, Application for SAD 18 Street Reconstruction Project. Any additional questions or concerns? All those in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Aye. Very good. Vote was unanimous. Motion passes. Moving on to item O, resolution 2023 dash 20. Right, do I count correctly?
The match waiver for that, I will make a motion to, uh, adopt that resolution, 2023-20, the match waiver for the SAD.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and double seconded to approve, um, the match waiver request for SAD 18 Street Reconstruction Project. Any questions or concerns? All those in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
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 Motion passes. Vote was unanimous. Item P, deliberate and act on resolution 2023 dash 21. TPF Fund Application for Small Bridge Replacement Project.
So last but not least, we have our first foray into the TPF bridge request that we've, uh, done as the City of Raton. And, uh, Mr. Berry and I have looked at our bridge needs and we've identified two bridges on Railroad Avenue that are in poor condition, in need of replacement. Uh, one of them crosses a WPA drainage structure that's only about six feet wide. The other spans about 20 foot and is a more traditional bridge. Um, both of those will be replaced with concrete box culverts, which is kind of the modern way of building a bridge without spanning it. And, um, not a cheap process, not serving a great number of residents, but something in dire need of reconstruction. The third bridge is on, uh, Schuler Street, um, over in the neighborhood of Cottonwood. And it crosses a WPA ditch on a skew. So it's 32 feet long, even though the roadway is probably less than 18 feet. Um, and they're all built around the same time. 75-year-old bridges, wooden construction, um, well-constructed, but at the end of their useful life and, um, necessary to start at least planning for their replacement. Uh, those three structures alone are estimated to cost just north of a half million dollars, $504,325.25. And, uh, our 5% match of that would be $26,566.26. Um, we are optimistic since, uh, there generally aren't a large number of bridge requests that we may receive a funding for this, at least in part or full. And, uh, any one of these structures would be great to replace.
Very good. Any questions for Jason?
So are these grants only for construction and not for planning?
Uh, no, these, these grants would be specifically for planning, engineering, design, and construction. And with two of them being WPA crossing structures, uh, that might involve some work with status historic preservation or some environmental studies. And they are probably not as quick and clean as a roadway project. But, uh, they do give us a couple of years from the date of granting of the agreement. So I think we can construct it in that time. But yes, it would be for planning, design, and construction.
And with these, it's like in all of the projects, you have to try to get it all done underneath this? Or are these grants, if we had a different project, it would be fa- fazeable?
It would be fazeable. I mean, I, half, they're, the kind of general feel of TPF projects is half million is kind of low end. You don't really want to go out for much less than that. So I think that it's, it's a good project. We could have easily taken this to 1.5 million and added a couple. But I think sometimes it's important to not appear too greedy in our asks. So when we're asking for a million on Second Street, more or less, you know, to, to have a smaller ask here, I think benefits us to have a better shot at getting it. And I'd, I'd really like to see this because these bridges are difficult to fund. And, you know, our gas tax in a good year doesn't really generate enough if we went out on our own to replace one of these structures. Um, in aggregate, if we had lightning strike and, uh, all three of these applications were successful, we'd receive strike and all three of these applications were successful, we'd receive two point six million of funding and we'd be on the hook for about a hundred and thirty thousand in matching funds. So money well spent in that regard.
There's money down the road that potentially be, I mean, not this cycle, obviously, but for the the Frontage Road, examining that bridge, you know, can I get reconstructed?
The East Tenth Street Bridge would definitely be an eligible project. It would have to include a number of phases because I think that bridge alone probably exceeds a lot of the funding. That is a multimillion-dollar structure, to say the least, I would say.
Thank you.
I just have some questions.
That's good.
I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution twenty-two-three twenty-one, the TPF application for the small bridge replacement project.
Okay. It's been moved in seconded to adopt Resolution twenty-two-three dash twenty-one, Transportation Project Fund Application for Small Bridge Replacement Project. Any other questions or concerns? All those in favor vote by the sign of aye.
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 Motion passed by unanimous vote. Now, moving on to Q, waiver match request. Anybody have any additional questions regarding that?
Make a motion to approve Resolution twenty-two-three twenty-two, the match waiver.
Very good. It's been moved in seconded to adopt Resolution twenty-two-three dash twenty-two, match waiver request for small bridge replacement project. Any additional questions, concerns? All those in favor vote by the sign of aye.
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 Motion passes with unanimous vote. Thank you.
Mayor Commission, thank you. Just a note on scheduling. The first part of this process is a PFF. It's a project feasibility form. Those were submitted and received by DOT on April tenth. The next real significant milestone is on May twenty-fourth. There'll be a ranking and rating at NERPO. Then from there, it goes into the hands of the DOT and they haven't set a time, a firm timeline of when awards will be made, but I would estimate somewhere between May and June would be probably somewhere where we started finding out where we ranked at least.
Great.
Thank you all. Appreciate you.
Hopefully we rank high. Yeah, thank you. All right. Item R, Amendment for Juvenile Justice Grant Budget Adjustment Request Number Two. Ms. Michael Anne Antinucci, thank you.
Mayor and Commissioner, we do bring to you this evening for approval, the budget adjustment number two for the J-JAC program. We are ending the, you're approaching the end of the fiscal year. They've seen an increase in referrals for the Boys Council Program. So we're looking to do a few line item adjustments here from the Girls Circle, nine thousand nine hundred dollars, and allocate that to the Boys Program. That would serve sixty additional groups and provide services for that program till the end of June. There is also four hundred and seventy-five dollars in the travel line item for the coordinator. They continue to do everything virtual, so that money will not be needed for any travel this year. So we are able to move that to the Youth Subcommittee. They do have a Youth Board, and so those individuals receive a twenty-five dollar stipend for attending meetings. And so we would be able to utilize those funds towards the Youth Board Meetings. So that is our request this evening. Is there any questions? We do have to do the budget adjustment on the CYFD form, and then when we look at our budget adjustment on the next item, you'll see it again to adjust it in our financial system.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
It's been moved in seconded to approve the Amendment of Juvenile Justice Grant Budget Adjustment Request Number Two. All those in favor vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Motion passed with unanimous vote. Moving on, Deliberating Act on Resolution twenty-two-three dash twenty-three, Budget Adjustment Number Thirteen, FY twenty-three.
Mayor and Commissioner, in your packet this evening, we do have a request for a budget adjustment. I did just want to make one final comment before I forget. With regards to the audit report, we did fail to notify the public how they could obtain a copy of the audit report or view a copy of the audit report. So we will be putting it on the city website, and so that's ratone-nm.gov. And then also, all of the audit reports are available on the State Auditor's website. And so that website is www.sao-nm.org. And so when you get to their homepage, there's an audit report search box, and you could just type in Ratone and pull up a PDF of the FY twenty-two audit or any previous audits as well. So I just wanted to make that one comment. Going back to the budget adjustment, we are requesting temporary transfer of four hundred thousand from the General Fund, and these funds would be used to cover the Sugar Reed Avenue and the East Tenth Street Frontage Road project expenses. We are in the process of requesting dispersment of the funds from the NMDOT for the TPF projects. That may take several weeks to receive those funds, but the contractors are mobilizing on those projects now. We want to be able to at least cover the first pay application on those projects. I do intend to reimburse these funds before the end of the fiscal year, but at least it'll get us started until we can get the dispersment of funds from the DOT. Also, you'll see the Juvenile Justice Grant Budget Adjustments that were just approved. And then we do have a Environment Department loan. We did receive a grant several years ago when we built the transfer station, and a component of the grant was that we had to accept a loan. And so it was a very small loan, twenty to twenty-five thousand dollars. And the annual loan payment is one thousand five hundred and eighty-six dollars. So I did reach out to them recently to get a loan payoff amount, and we are seeking to pay off that loan in this fiscal year. So I would need to do a budget adjustment to do so. The actual loan payoff due by May fourth would be twenty thousand thirty-one dollars and eighty cents. So for such a small amount, I think for accounting purposes, it would make sense to get that off our books and not have to make those small loan payments for another ten years or so. So that is my request this evening for your authorization.
Very good. Any questions for Michael Anne?
I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution twenty-two-three, twenty-three Budget Adjustment Number Thirteen, Fiscal Year Twenty-three.
It's been moved in, seconded to accept Resolution twenty-two-three dash twenty-three, Budget Adjustment Number Thirteen. All those in favor vote by the sign of aye.
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 Motion passes with unanimous vote. Thank you very much. We are now on to item T, City Manager's Report.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. There was a Zoom conference today, Municipal League did, and I know that some of you participated in this, did offer a summary of the the recent legislative session, which adjourned March eighteenth. The governor then had twenty days to act on legislation, and so that deadline is passed and it's done. As we talked about then, and I'm going to try to be very brief in my comments here, there's a, because it's a sixty-day session, there was a lot of legislation introduced. Most of it does not pass the legislature and get to the governor. But once it does, the governor has the opportunity to sign it or veto it or line item veto it. And we'll talk, I'll just make a couple of notes on this. We'll talk about this more as we go. But this is where Municipal League is is really a great partner as far as following legislation, what's what's going on with the legislation and then advising us. Those couple of comments, under House Bill Two, that's the General Appropriations Act, we were interested in in several things. There was fifty-five million dollars in general fund monies that were appropriated for airport projects statewide. That's a change from a bill that we saw earlier in the session. However, that's very large amount of funding that I do not remember seeing before that goes to state aviation. We have a great relationship with state aviation, and we will be approaching them about what we can do in Ratone with some of that funding. I would say, as long as we're talking about airports, House Bill Seventy-eight was the Aviation Fund GRT Distribution sunset. Basically, what that did is that was signed by the governor, increased distributions to this fund from three million dollars to six million dollars annually. Again, that's funding that goes to state aviation and is somewhat discretionary in its nature. So we'll talk to them about, all of a sudden, a lot of state funding available for airports. I just comment on, back to House Bill Two, it did appropriate a hundred, one hundred million dollars for various law enforcement initiatives. So we're going to study very hard on what could potentially be in that for the community of Ratone. The governor did sign House Bill Five-O-Five. That was capital outlay projects. This is where the governor typically uses her line item veto capability. The two capital outlay items that we previously talked about, five hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars has been approved for the acquisition of the Bartlett Mason Ranch piece. We did talk about that's combined with other funding. The funds would be available in the new fiscal year, and we'll move quickly to to take care of that and get that parcel of land under agreement with the Mexico State Parks and operate as a state park. So very happy about that. The other capital outlay item that was in that bill that was approved by the governor, sixty thousand dollars for public works purchase. And so sixty thousand is not a lot of money if you're talking about, you know, Abaco or Skidsteer, typical public works improvement. Remember, we asked for half a million. However, we'll find something productive to do with sixty thousand dollars. There's there's a lot of legislation here. I won't, getting kind of late, I won't spend a lot of time on that. Have some other things to update the City Commission on. As as mentioned, we did start construction on the Sugar Reed Avenue project. You will see construction crews out there. Would expect that that construction, that project will run through the summer. We would ask the traveling public to exercise caution throughout that for the safety of the workmen and for the the drivers throughout the summer. But we're happy to be in good weather and be back in construction. As we said, we'll talk about additional construction on on roads as as we get into May. I think, Mayor Protem, you did say this already, but just a reminder that we did schedule a town hall meeting. That's April twentieth, six p.m. at the Convention Center. Public is invited. We'd like to, you know, see a big turnout, have a lot of people attend. Also, I report that some time ago, the commission did approve a contract for a national not-for-profit called the Center for Community Progress. And this is in regard to getting their evaluation and recommendations on Ratone's vacant building strategies. And so we've talked about a lot of strategies from vacant building registration ordinance, increased code enforcement, and then also tax incentives. But they are in town. They were here all day today, and they'll be here throughout tomorrow. And we have conducted a lot of meetings with city staff, but also other community partners. We went all over town today, and they'll continue that through tomorrow, learning about Ratone, learning more about New Mexico. And then we'll develop these these more refined strategies for Ratone's vacant building strategy. Lastly, I would state that it was about a year ago that we made the comment that it's really early in the year for wildfire season, and it was a bad wildfire season last year. And it's a year later, it's it's very dry. The, you know, we've had a number of windy days, and we've had some fire events already. So just to to, you know, get the discussion out there with the public, it's it's dangerous out there right now for wildfire. Whatever someone is doing out there, we would ask, again, for caution and and be mindful of the very dry conditions. We would like to avoid that bad fire season again. So let's start talking about it right now. Mayor Protem, that's all I have.
Thank you. I did notice, I don't know anything about it, except I saw the fire just east of Aguilar yesterday. So that's not that far away from us.
Correct. Correct.
Anything by anybody else?
I have three quick things.
Okay.
One is the town hall meeting. Is there a particular topic for that or what's that?
Mayor Protem, Commissioner Chatterley, this is really organized. This is a citizen grassroots organization that started some years ago, and and there were various property crimes underway then. A lot of concerned citizens came forward, and that was the start of our Crime Stoppers thing here. At least one very successful neighborhood watch also commenced out of that. And that group would like to, again, assemble citizens, kind of listen to concerns, but also hear from city, county, or state officials. And generally, it's community development, you know, safety of the community. A lot of people that will speak at this are law enforcement oriented.
What was dated again?
The twentieth.
Date again?
April twentieth.
April twentieth, six o'clock at the Ratone Convention Center.
Thank you. The Municipal League just sent out an email that the district meeting is Monday, and District Three meets at ten-thirty. I am the current District Director that's up for reelection. And I know it's not on our agenda, but they, for clerical reasons, we need a voting delegate for that. So someone from Ratone to be able to vote. I'll be running the meeting, so it probably wouldn't be appropriate to vote. It's by Zoom at ten-thirty in the morning on Monday, the seventeenth. I don't know what we want to do about that.
Ten-thirty?
Yeah.
I I have to say, my schedule has changed, and I will be unable to do that.
I know. And other places have had their city staff be a voting delegate. I don't know if that's a possibility.
I I would cover that if that's the wishes.
I would, yeah, I would just gotta do that. I'm gonna, I've got a doctor's appointment at that time, so I can't be it.
I can't either. I have doctor's appointment that day, too.
So be it.
That's okay.
Sounds like a Scott.
Sounds like a Scott appointment. We'll ask you all about it after.
We'll report back.
Well, just one more comment on the the banner situation.
Right.
It sounded like that she already has the banner, like that's already been ordered. So it sounds like mostly what she was, as I was reflecting on it, we got kind of in the should you or shouldn't you, and I thought mostly what she was asking the commission for was protection of property, which we, you know, the city does anyway.
Anyway.
So I don't know, you know, what needs to be something on the agenda or not. But that's just my thought there is, it sounds like the the issue isn't.
Yeah, really.
The parents.
And right. It really didn't come up when on our agenda when we, when the the parents initiated that during COVID. So that was the twenty-twenty graduation. It didn't come up to us. Then we just simply gave them permission to hang them. And, I mean, I I think it's okay to.
I just, in relation to what I was talking about, Jason, that since they do live, if they live in Ratone, I'm not saying that if that Clayton can bring them over here and put them on our pole. But if they live in Ratone, pay taxes and all that, I don't see, personally, I don't see a problem with them hanging their kids.
Kids banner.
Banner on the.
And I think it would it would be polite of them to ask the business they're hanging in front of to, you know, if it's okay to hang it there and.
I just don't know that we have any authority one way or the other besides you can or can't hang banners.
Yeah.
In terms of who, we're not really organizing the ordering of the banners. So I don't know.
Well, as she as she approached.
What our what our action would be is, I guess.
She approached those, I She approached us. I got the feeling that she just wanted to say we would be protected in case somebody tore it down.
Yeah.
And, you know.
Like anything else we would.
We can't guarantee it won't be torn down. We cannot guarantee that.
Right. Exactly. Even if, even if he was a graduate of Raton, we couldn't guarantee that.
But non-action items, not anyway, so there's
Yeah.
And as it comes to agenda, which I'm not in favor of.
Okay, yeah, I had suggested that and I'm saying we don't need that, is I guess all I'm saying.
Yeah, I think that's what Laurie is talking about, is just do, I don't think we need to add it to the agenda. And I kind of agree with that. We don't need to, so. Just hope that people are respectful. We are hoping that our community will be a community of kindness, right? And all will promote kindness. Anybody have anything else?
I may.
Mayor, do you have anything else to add?
Nope, I'm good.
I'm going to give my apologies as I will not be able to attend April 20, the town hall meeting. But I am sending my husband.
No worries.
Yeah, so there you go. With nothing else, this meeting is adjourned.